Hello and welcome, everyone. My name is Kamara Williams. I'm going to be the chairperson for this meeting. Just a few housekeeping items for remote participation. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once public comment is on an item, click Raise Hand on Go to Webinar in order to make a comment. Before being identified, all participants will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comments. When called, please state your name, address for the record, and proceed with the comment speaking clearly. Do not use the chat or question function and go to webinar as these will not be monitored during this meeting. And please limit background noise to the, to pretty much the lowest extent possible. With that being said, we're going to start with the Public Arts Advisory Meeting, and this is for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Hi, I'm U.S. citizens of America, citizens of the republic of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, in just this world.
Alicia, would you like to do roll call for us?
Welcome, everyone. We'll start the roll call with Chairman Kamara Williams.
President.
Vice Chairwoman Cara Derry. Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner Lauren McClellan. Commissioner Andrew Alba.
Here.
Christopher Butler, alternate one. And Edward Patterson, alternate two. Thank you. All for you.
All right, thank you. First, first, I have a motion to approve minutes for the May 28, 2024 Public Art Advisory Meeting.
I move approval.
Move approval by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. The first item for discussion is going to be application number two, five dash. Again, application number two, five dash zero, five, seven, AAR. Aldi's Distribution Public Art. The applicant in Site Studio on behalf of Florida South Division LLC is requesting architectural and aesthetic approval for the purchase and installation of three pedestal, pedestal ring sculptures ranging from four feet to six feet in diameter and up to thirteen feet tall tiled, titled Colorful Perspectives by artist Lucy Cacharves in order to fulfill the art in public places requirements for a property located at 1171 North State Road 7. Is an applicant present for this? Okay, please move your right to the dice or the podium. Move over to Midi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you state your names for the record, please? Thank you. And your name, sir? This, let's just make sure the microphone is on there for you. And while she's getting you ready there, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Could you both raise your right hands for me? And I'm going to swear you in. And I'll swear staff in as well. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the Public Art Board and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
All right, Jesse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-five dash zero, five, seven, AAR. The applicant is seeking architecture and aesthetic approval for the purchase and installation of three pedestals ring sculptures ranging from four feet to six feet in diameter. Now thirteen feet tall, titled Colorful Perspectives by artist Lucy in order to fulfill the art in public places requirements. The property is located at 1171 North State Road 7. This slide illustrates the location of the proposed art in public places within the existing landscape median. This is a proposed rendering of the art within the landscape median. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-five dash zero, five, seven, AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keshafar, do you have a presentation for us or any statements?
We do. We have a short presentation if you'd like to see it. It's, it's basically going over what's in your packet, so.
It's up to you whether you want to present or not.
Sure, we'll do it. We're here.
Yeah.
You can start.
Yes, I'll start. I'm Austin Scott. I'm a landscape architect with Inside Studio, and we help prepare the site plan and application process. This, this is just restating what, what he has already said.
Hold on one second. We need to get, his presentation is not displaying on the screen. Just bear with them one second. Perfect.
So this is our request, which is the approval. This shows State Road 7 with the orange dash line and Aldi Way up on the top with the arrow that's pointed to the left, and the star designates the location that we're proposing for the art. And then I will let it, I'll let you take it away, Lucy. Look at this.
Okay. So this is the proposed art. Sculpture is thirteen feet tall and the pedestal is two feet high and six feet wide. And then it steps down to the next, the next. Let me go back, to the next ring sculpture that is shorter and then on a foot and a half tall pedestal, and it is five feet wide. And it steps down again to the orange sculpture that is again smaller. And I can, I'll show you the dimensions on the next slide. And that pedestal is a foot tall and four feet wide. Colorful Perspectives is inspired by infinite possibilities. So this sculpture is already completed. This is the red sculpture in the trio. And this, this is a picture of it. It premiered at the Cultural Council in Lake, Lake Worth. And it will have modifications, obviously. I have to do the tubes in the bottom for the lighting, and then it will go on top of the pedestals like the others. These are the heights, the overall heights of fifteen down to twelve, down to eight feet and nine inches. Most of the existing landscape stays, it's very nice. Where the sculptures are going, it's going to be a simple bed of liriope. Plan view of the locations. The lighting is like another piece of artwork that I have done here in Royal Palm Beach. And so the lighting is actually integrated into the base. And one of the reasons I do that is so maintenance is easier, future maintenance. And, and then the marble chips give it some texture. The pedestals will be covered by a natural stone mosaic, so it won't be just raw concrete. And this is the budget breakdown. The total AIPP budget needs to be one hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred. And so we're a little bit over. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any commissioner comments?
May I ask you, what material is the, the rings constructed of?
Aluminum, so it's powder coated aluminum.
Any questions?
Beautiful work. Love to see these kinds of things coming to the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I second that. Now, do we have any public comments? Anyone online, Alicia? No? Okay, do I have a motion on this item?
I move approval, application number twenty-five, five, seven, AAR.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Look forward to coming back for final approval.
All right, that completes the agenda for the Public Art and Advisory Meeting. Next meeting is going to be Tuesday, September 23th, tentatively. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Deary, second by Commissioner McClellan. All in favor? All opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Next meeting on the list is going to be our local planning agency meeting. PNC, sorry. All right, so for the PNC, Alicia, can you reflect the roll call as staying in this prior meeting? Do I have approval for the minutes from the July 22, 2025 meeting?
I move.
Sorry, I have a motion by Commissioner Alba. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Our first item for discussion is going to be application number two, five, zero, six, two, AAR. Popeye's signage. The applicant Kemp Signs and Service, Inc., on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage on an existing building for a property located at 10101 Southern Boulevard. Do we have the applicant present? Please make your way up to the podium. Midi, turn over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you state your name for the record, ma'am?
Nadine Marra.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? I must swear you in as well. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, ma'am. And I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Jesse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-five dash zero, six, two, AAR. The applicant is seeking for architectural approval to install new wall signage on an existing building. Property is located at 10101 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the proposed location of the wall signs. You can read it on your screen. The number one sign is on the east elevation of the building. Number two is in the north elevation of the building. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign on the north side of the building, which is the Popeye's logo. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign on the east elevation of the building. Staff is recommending approval for application number twenty-five dash zero, six, two, AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you happen to have a presentation for us?
I just have the same information.
Okay, that's okay. All right, any commissioner comments?
No.
Do we have any public comments? Anything online, Alicia?
No, sir.
All right, do I have a motion on this item?
Move approval, application number twenty-five, zero, six, two, AAR.
A second.
Have a motion to approve by McClellan and a motion to approve this and seconded by Commissioner Jerry. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item for discussion is going to be application number two, five dash zero, six, eight, AAR. Nissan signage, A R C H. The applicant go permit on behalf of T T of North Royal Palm, Inc. is requesting architectural approval for wall mounted and standalone signage for a property located at 9405 Southern Boulevard. Is the applicant present? Please make your way up to the podium. And turn over to you, Midi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same thing you heard before. Can you state your name for the commission?
Jennifer Ronneberger.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? And I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Make turn over to you, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-five dash zero, six, eight, AAR. The applicant is seeking architectural approval for wall mounted and standalone monument signs. Property is located at 9405 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the proposed location of the wall signs and the monument signs along Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the proposed wall signs on the south elevation of the building facing Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the proposed monument sign along Southern Boulevard. No changes proposed to the current location of the monument sign. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-five dash zero, six, eight, AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Jesse, would you happen to have a presentation for us?
I don't have a separate presentation, but I would like to say something, though, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this is an existing Nissan dealership. The reason why we're here is because we had facade renovations done. We had to remove our existing signage. Since then, we had some modifications to the signage, just an updated branding, and now we're looking to replace our signage. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any commissioner comments? All right, do we have any public comments? Anything online, Alicia?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve, application number two, five dash zero, six, eight, AAR.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Jerry. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Good time.
No problem. Thank you. Next item is going to be application number two, four dash one, two, one, S P M, AAR. Total Royale Pod Four Model Homes. The applicant Urban Design Studios on behalf of T P G A G E H C Three H O V Multi-State Three LLC is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval to remove the entry guardhouse structure, redesign cabana, multi-use court, and pool areas and other modifications to the site for a property located dot two, five miles west of State Road 7. I'm guessing Lindsay, you're the applicant.
Yes, sir.
All right, Jesse, I turn over to you, or actually Midi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lindsay, you've been here before. Can you just state your name for the commission?
Lindsay Jean-Louis.
Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Turn to you, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-four dash one, twenty-one, S P M, AAR. The applicant is seeking a major site plan modification and architectural approval to remove the entry guardhouse structure, redesign the cabana, multi-use court, and pool areas and other various modifications to the site. Property is located within point twenty-seven miles west of State Road 7, US 441. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architectures, color materials, and landscape plan. Brief history on this item. On March 20, 2025, the Village Council approved through Resolution 22 dash 42 an application number twenty-four dash one, four, four, the architectural approval for five single-family residential models. The approval included three typical elevation styles, five color schemes, a standard landscape design, as well as temporary cell center. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan. The site plan indicates man access to the site will be from Lost Road. This slide illustrates the proposed overall landscape plan. We will be illustrating LP one, LP two, LP three. Sheet LP five B is showing easement and dry detention. They won't be part of the slide, but they're part of your packet. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan sheet LP three, which shows the main entrance from Lost Road as well as the landscaping throughout the common areas for the development. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan sheet LP two, also highlighting the common area landscape. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan sheet, sheet LP one. Staff requests a recommendation of approval of application number twenty-five dash one, two, one, S P M, AAR be submitted and Resolution number twenty-four dash forty be submitted to the Village Council. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Do you have a presentation for us, Lindsay?
I do. I'll just go over a few items, just highlight the changes between the original approved plan and the proposed. And I won't take too much of your time. But as part of the request, we're changing the entry layout, removing the guardhouse now with, to keep in, you know, consistency with the industry standards of single-family subdivisions today. We're actually proposing an entry gate and a monument sign that's actually rotated to be a sort of horizontal orientation. And here we see the elevations of that monument sign and then that entry feature with the decorative gates. We're also having minor changes here to the amenity lot. You know, as we get closer to construction and eventually COs of this pod. And you can see the multi-use court has a basketball court portion, and I think a pickleball tennis court included. And then also an expanded mail kiosk consistent with USPS requirements. And we see the elevation of the mail kiosk depicted here as well as the entry cabana. And then also just adding some perimeter treatment as to providing a six-foot concrete panel wall along the east side of the pod, a six-foot decorative aluminum fence with the site entry. In coordination with staff for the lots adjacent to the amenity recreational area, we're providing a six-foot opaque vinyl fence to, you know, provide further screening for the activities happening here. And that concludes my presentation tonight. I have a representative with K H O P here to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioner comments? Do I have any public comments? Anyone online, Alicia?
No, sir.
All right, do I have a motion on this item?
I move approval of application number twenty-four, one, two, one, S P M, AAR.
Moved by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second? Commissioner Jerry, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
No problem. Next item is application two, five dash zero, five, nine, M P M. Pod seven academic institution. The applicant, Smith Nichols, on behalf of EDX Royal Property LLC is requesting a master plan modification in order to convert the reference use for Pod seven on the master plan from a charter school to a public and private academic institution for a property located at on 161 106th Avenue South. And is the applicant present?
Okay.
All right, turn over to you, Midi.
On North Flagwell Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I'm going to swear you in for this item and the next. I'll take commission ex parte separately, but for this item, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you for both items, rather, four and five. The commission, do you have any ex parte disclosures to disclose for item four?
No.
For both four and five.
Okay, and just repeat that again on the next application. Any other disclosures? You, Mr. Chair.
All right, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application twenty-five dash zero, five, nine, N P M. The applicant is seeking master plan modification, approval to modify the Village Royale from the non-Total Royale master plan in order to convert the reference use for Pod seven on the master plan from a charter school to a public and private academic institution. Village Code requires that uses are labeled on the master plan. So this is why this application is in front of you today to change that label from a charter school to academic, public and private academic institution. Brief history on this item. On April 18, 2024, Village Council considered a request to amend the Village Royale master plan from the one as Total Royale. The request was changed, was to change the designated use of Pod seven from a charter school to a public and private academic institution. After review, the Village Council denied the request determining that it did not meet the requirements for compatibility with the character and living conditions of the surrounding neighborhoods. This slide illustrates the approved master plan of record, which indicate the previously approved charter school. The red circle identifies that. This slide illustrates the proposed master plan indicating the use on public or private academic institution on the master plan Pod seven. It is worth noting that the total number of students, parking, building footprints will remain the same as previously approved. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to the Village Council regarding application number twenty-five dash zero, five, nine, N P M and Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do you have a presentation for us, sir?
Mr. Chair and Council, the items four and five are sister applications. So for time purposes, it'd be better if we could just push to the next one. And I can do them combined if the pleas of the board.
Okay, sure. Do we have any questions, commissioner comments?
I have one for Jesse. Was this, so from what I heard you say, this was done at staff direction, like request?
So the code, the code requires that all proposed uses be labeled on the master plan. So previously, this was approved with the label that says charter school. So the applicant can to change that to a public and private academic institutions. This is why they're here. Obviously, there's a history on this item as well that council denied previously, as I mentioned earlier.
And, Mr. Chair, just a question for Mr. Schmidt. Do you want to go ahead and give your joint presentation now? I think I would recommend doing it as part of this application. If you want to say in the next one that the presentation stands that you just gave, that's fine. But I think for the pleasure of the commission, if you could do your presentation now, I think that would be helpful.
That would work. I've been meaning, and thank you for the opportunity for items four and five, the master plan and site plan application for Pod seven. So the property is located in the southwest quadrant of Southern Boulevard and 441 within the, located at Pod seven, just ten acres within the middle of Village Royale. This is a copy of the master plan that also the Joe Sue pointed out with Pod seven and the location. The project that you just heard before us, actually, for K H O P, was actually Pod four. So we're just north of that, right along Left's Boulevard and Erica. And so we're asking in the master plan to revise that name within that pod to the public and private institution from the charter school. Again, just a brief history, in 2015, the property was annexed into the village. 2019, it got its commercial land use. And April 2019, it's got its general commercial zoning as well as a special exception for a charter school. And in 2023, we submitted a request for the private school. In March of 2024, we are in front of this board and receiving unanimous approval to move forward to council. At council on April 24th, they denied the request for the change. So in May of this year, 2025, we provided an application for clarity to exactly match what's in the code under Article 2689.3, which is a public and private academic institution use. So allows for both uses and not just one specifically. So we're asking to clarify that. Again, the proposed request, twenty-five, fifty-nine, is the master plan amendment for Pod seven to correct the note there. Twenty-five, sixty is for the site plan modification for seventy-seven thousand square feet of academic institution, including building, parking lot, drive aisles, buffers, as well as a 10,000-square-foot gymnasium building, which I'll show you on the site plan and associated landscaping. And twenty-five, sixty also is for architectural approval for the building's architectural and cover, color. These are all the same thing that you previously saw. There was one minor amendment on the site plan, and I'll point it out to you. This is a proposed elevation looking north to south. So in the foreground here would be Erica Boulevard with our main access circulation completely around the building. So there's almost a hundred and eighty-car stack to make sure that we're not putting that in any of the public right of ways. This is the proposed site plan and just coloring it up there. Again, our main access with a loop around drop off here. Fifteen hundred students, about eighty staff at full capacity. The required parking would be a hundred and eighteen. We're providing a hundred and eighty-three, so substantially overparked. The grades that are typically in this building over here, the K through eight is in this forty thousand square foot area. The grades nine through twelve are located in the blue area. And then the 10,000-square-foot gymnasium. And then the ten thousand square foot gymnasium is located just in that area there. So that's our proposed site plan. The two areas that changed just slightly from what you originally saw were the two areas in yellow here, which we had to put in a additional lane here for the fire department. So what that did was shift the buildings over slightly and kind of crunch that other area here a little bit, so that fifteen feet shift went over that way. So a very minor modification. These are the proposed color evasions looking from the northeast to the southeast. Again, our main access here, secondary here, and this was the KOP project that was proposed back here. These are the proposed colored elevations that were previously shown to you and approved, but I needed to bring them back through, just codify this. It was described as a country elegant when we, when we came through the process the first time. Here's some colored elevations of what the school would look like from the front. So this is our north elevation. And this is the drop off zone, which would be our east elevation. So you can see a large covered canopy there for the, for the weather and climate weather. Staff recommendations, application twenty-five fifty-nine, resolution twenty-five twenty is consistent with policies and standards of the village comprehensive plan. The general commercial zoning requirement, special exception standards, and the general application standards, section twenty-six thirty-two B through E. Staff is recommendation of approval to Village Council. Also, application twenty-five sixty and resolution twenty-five twenty-one, it's consistent with the policy standards of the village comprehensive plan. Again, the general commercial zoning requirements, general application amendment standards, as well as special exception standards. Staff quoted in your staff report, no changes to these operations will impact the development and the public and private institution are no greater than that or the charter school. We are in agreement with conditions one through two, and the resolutions twenty-five and twenty, twenty-five, twenty-one. We ask that our application, this presentation be part of the public record and respectfully ask for your request and support this evening. I do have a team here to answer any questions you may have, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any, any additional commissioner comments? Do I have any public comments? Anyone online?
No.
No? All right, do I have a motion on this item?
Move approval, application twenty-five fifty-nine, MPM.
Move approval by Commissioner McKellen, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Alba, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you, sir. Now, next application, application two, five, dash, zero, six, zero, SPM. Pod seven academic institution, the applicant, Smith Nichols, on behalf of EDC Royal Properties LLC is requesting site plan modification and architectural and aesthetic approval in order to convert the reference to use for pod seven from charter school to public, private and academic institution. Revised the phasing of the project from the previously approved three phases to one phase of construction and other site modifications, including installation of canopies, shifting the bike corrals, conversion of one basketball court to a general activity area, installation of additional landscaping and outdoor table chairs, increase in floor to ceiling height, adjust, adjustment of window configuration, addition of exterior staircase adjacent to the basketball court, accurately reflect rooftop equipment and downspouts and upstate signage for a property located at one, six, one, one hundred and sixth Avenue South. Over to you, Mitty.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. One correction, I just realized on the agenda, the rest of your board documents indicate that this is an SPM AAR application. The agenda is erroneously stating that it's just SPM, but it is an SPM AAR application. So with that, the applicant is sworn, I'll ask the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this application. Same, you spoke with. Thank you.
All right, Josu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-five dash zero, six, zero, SPM AAR. Thank you for reading the, the request on the record. Just a brief history on this item, on April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, council considered the request to modify the site plan for pod seven, changing the use from a charter school to a public and private academic institution. Since the related master plan amendment that we spoke earlier about had already been denied earlier that evening, this request was deemed moot, and no further action was taken on this application by council. This slide illustrates the proposed building elevations as shown by John earlier. The slide illustrates the proposed site plan indicating the intended use of the building to public, private academic institution. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council regarding application number twenty-five dash zero, six, zero, SPM AAR and resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything to add, or the first presentation included everything?
No, the first presentation included everything, thank you, but again, here to answer any specific questions.
All right, thank you. Any commissioner comments?
No.
All right, any public comments? Anyone online?
No.
All right, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero, six, zero. SPM.
SPM AAR, a motion to approve by Commissioner Alba, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Leland, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, sir.
I forgot to ask, thanks staff, they really rushed this through for us. These are time sensitive to get these open operating, so they did rush us, or we just submitted in May, so they rushed us through and wanted to say thanks to them. Thank you. Thanks, Josu.
All right, so that concludes our P and Z meeting for today. Our next meeting is going to be tentative for Tuesday, September twenty-third. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My Commissioner Deary, seconded by Commissioner McKellen. All in favor? All opposed? All right, meeting adjourned. Zoning tax amendment through ordinance number one, zero, six, four, to amend section two, six, dash, eight, nine, three, to allow pet training as a special exemption use within the general commercial zoning district. Amend section two, six, dash, two, two, to provide a definition for pet training and add entirely new section two, six, dash, seven, five, dot, nine, pet training to provide supplemental regulations for pet training facility use for property located at six, zero, one, through six, five, zero, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, suites five hundred through five oh three. Hey, how are you? Mitty turn over to you.
Thank you, can you state your name for the LPA, please?
Sure, Jamie Diaz.
Thank you, can you raise your hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I don't need ex parte disclosure on this one, given the nature of it, so you can pass it to Josu.
All right, Josu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-five dash zero, seven, six, Z text, the applicant is seeking a zoning text amendment to the village code to amend section twenty-six, dash, twenty-two, and twenty-six, dash, eighty-nine of the village, of the village code to add a definition for the term pet training and add pet training as a special exception use within the general commercial zoning district and add entirely new section twenty-six, dash, seventy-five point nine, pet training to provide supplemental land use regulations for this use. As I mentioned earlier, this text amendment will provide a definition for pet training, which is daytime training services for pets, including structured obedience and behavioral programs using positive reinforcement techniques with no overnight boarding or kenneling. Also, we're amending section twenty-six, or adding section twenty-six, dash, seventy-five point nine, pet training, that's the supplemental regulations, which will include, A, inside the facility, there shall be a designated potty area where waste is collected, bagged, cleaned, and disposed of immediately. B, conduct routine checks to surrounding areas outside the facility to ensure the area is clear of any pet waste. These checks include the removal of fecal waste and sanitization of frequent urination. Also, the applicant is requesting to amend section twenty-six, dash, eighty-nine, which is a general commercial district. Three special exception uses, which will add pet training with, parentheses, see additional requirements at section twenty-six, dash, seventy-five point nine, as mentioned earlier. Staff requests a recommendation of approval of application number twenty-five, dash, zero, seven, six, Z text and ordinance number ten, sixty-four be submitted to the village council. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Sir, do you have a presentation for us?
I do. I'll try and make it quick. Do I have to hit something now? There we go, okay. So my name is Jamie Diaz, I am the owner of Dynamite Dog Training, I'm a certified dog trainer, if you guys did not know. You do not need certifications for dog training, it's not mandated anywhere, but real trainers like me do get those certifications, so it's important you have somebody that knows what they're doing. Just really quick, I have been doing this for seventeen years. This will be my fifth location, I have a location in Deerfield Beach, Fort Lauderdale, Jupiter, and Delray Beach. They're all pretty much storefront buildings of we, that we've, I've been running for, I've had those facilities almost seventeen years now. So again, I'm certified, I have all this stuff, I don't want to go crazy about myself, but just so you know, I know what I'm doing. I have a podcast, that's a great resource for the community, that people can ask questions, and also I have a book coming out in October. So Dynamite Dog Training, it's a fourth free facility for dogs, so all the dogs in the facility have to have no bite history, which means no bite history to people or to dogs. So it's pretty much a school for dogs. I have a curriculum, it's very structured, I have videos for every single thing that's done in training. We don't use any shock collars, prong collars, choker collars, anything like that, so just so you guys know, we're up to the scientific methods, highest standards of training. All of our trainers that work for me are also certified. Did I do this one? Yeah. So really, dog training, which I was surprised that we didn't have that listed, it really enhances and keeps the community safe. So most pet owners unfortunately do not know how to train dogs, so you really do need professionals that do know what they're doing. So it also strengthens community bonds within the community, provides a safe and clean space. Everybody's always nervous about bringing their dogs to different places, well, my facilities are the safest and cleanest place, and I can guarantee you, no dogs will catch anything there. We have the higher standards of cleaning, and then it also promotes responsible pet ownership, boosts local economy, and also encourages active lifestyles. I know my mother has a dog, she's very active with that dog. So why is this important in the community? It promotes responsible pet ownerships, enhances community safety, which is most important, especially for kids, dogs, anybody in the community. Nobody wants to have to have a dog bite or something bad happen with their dogs, fosters social connection, supports local economy, and improves pet welfare. So from Dynamite Dog Training, again, what you can express is the highest cleanliness standards, safe and welcoming facility, a quiet space for the dogs to play, train, and properly socialize. It's not a free for all, we are not a doggy daycare. We do not have forty dogs running together at a time. We literally hand pick which dogs are going to go together, and we've kind of mastered this school. There's nothing else like it in any community that I know besides the ones that I have. It's a very unique, safe school for dogs. Again, the dogs, the certified trainers are there to help communication between the people and the pets, and all of our practices are transparent. If you go on social media, you can see kind of what we do. These are just some of the dogs that we work with at one of the facilities. Again, this is the book cover that's coming out, this little guy, Cooper and Cricket, it was their first day, every dog gets a first day picture to welcome them to the community and to training. And just so you guys can see too, these are my other facilities, so the one with the blue awnings, that's the only one that's like a warehousey. This one's in Delray over here, that yellow top, and then that bottom one's Fort Lauderdale, all in communities with other business next to other businesses. It's very quiet at my training facilities too. The dogs have to be able to be quiet and not be barking all day, or they're not accepted into the program. And that's my Jupiter location, which is a freestanding building. But if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Thank you. Do I have any commissioner comments?
Yeah, I have some questions, but actually for staff. So I, as a owner of two labs that are crazy, I definitely think, you know, training services are important to have in the community. My questions, a couple of them, how will this impact other businesses that already have dog training? So say a PetSmart that has training services in it, is this going, are they going to need to come back and do any type of?
No, if they're, if they're requesting to have a pet training, I think some of those uses may be incidental. They may have programs like the men store, the primary use of the building is something else, could be retail. Maybe it's just whatever else they do is incidental to what they're doing to, for that industry. However, if you are requesting to have pet training, they are required to come in front of the board via special exception request.
If it's just the main use of the facility for pet training?
Yeah, so, correct.
So, but then my other question would be, why is this needed to be a special exception as opposed to it's just a business that's commercial in nature?
Because it's not part of the code, we can't just add on the code, we can't just amend the code to add a permitted use just like that. We've already have a list of permitted uses within the code, so any request initiated by an applicant tends to just go in front, under special exception, to give you guys the ability to, to either approve or deny. Special exception.
Any other questions? Do I have any public comments? Anyone online?
I think.
I noticed that the building in Jupiter is standalone, do you prefer that versus the storefront?
Great question. I don't, it's kind of a little bit too big. I acquired it from a colleague that was retiring. She redid the whole thing beautifully as a dog training facility, so I bought more of an investment property, and I do business, the dog training business, out of there. I actually like the, Delray is my favorite store, Delray and Fort Lauderdale, which are in like a storefront kind of, you don't have dogs like running around, so we don't bother anybody, but you see the signage and people come in, we get a lot of walk-ins that way. So I actually prefer, it's a little bit too much the freestanding building, yeah.
Do I have any public comments? Anyone online?
No.
All right, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve application number twenty-five, dash, zero, seven, six.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Deary, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner McKellen, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Come, we get free training sessions, your first session is free for everybody in the community, just so you know. So we want you to trust us, so we give you free, your first session.
Thank you.
I don't think they'd be accepted, they're free.
All right, so the second item is going to be ordinance number one, zero, five, nine, proposes to amend the village code ordinance at chapter twenty-six, zoning article four, and the supplemental regulations at section two, six, five, seven, accessory uses, building and structures, model homes, vehicle auction sales, and electric vehicle charging stations to create regulations governing the archi, architectural, architecture of accessory structures. Any applicant present?
Oh, this is a staff initiated, it was on a text amendment.
Or actually, Mitty?
Nice, he's going to handle these.
All right, so as mentioned, this is a staff initiated zoning text amendment. The proposed amendment clarifies the design requirements for accessory structures, for structures one hundred and fifty square feet or larger, they will be required to fully match the architectural style of the primary structure, not just color, but also facade materials, treatment, and roof type, page, and style. In addition, any accessory structure taller than the primary structure must be attached as an addition and meet these same matching requirements. Again, this is just to clarify the existing code. Staff request a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding ordinance number ten fifty nine.
Many commissioner comments? Any public comment? Nothing online?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion on this item?
Move approval ordinance number ten fifty nine.
Approval by Commissioner McKellen, second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, ordinance number one zero six one proposes to amend the village code of ordinances at chapter fifteen landscaping and vegetation management at section fifteen dash seventy nine tree replacement to specify the timing of replacement tree installation or required bonding or payment into the village tree bank. Midi, pass it over to you.
And I'll graciously pass it to Josu.
Again, this is a staff initiated zoning text amendment. Just a brief summary of the amendment, ordinance number ten sixty one proposes an amendment to the village code, chapter fifteen on landscape and vegetation management. Specifically, it adds a new section to clarify the timing for tree mitigation when a specimen tree is removed. Currently, the code does not specify when mitigation must occur. So this amendment would require mitigation to be completed before the first permit is issued, whether it's from planning and zoning, engineering or building, including vegetation removal permits, whichever comes first. So staff request a recommendation of approval be submitted to the village council regarding ordinance number ten sixty one.
All right. No comments, I'm assuming. Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one zero six one.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Deary. Do I have a second? Alba, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, ordinance number one zero six two, propose to amend village code ordinance at chapter twenty three, traffic and vehicles, article two, parking at section twenty three dash fifty one, required minimum number of parking spaces to revise the parking requirement applicable to manufacturing and limited processing use. Josu, it's all yours.
We're in your keep tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a staff initiated zoning text amendment. Ordinance number ten sixty two proposes an amendment to the village code, chapter twenty three on traffic and vehicles to update the parking requirements for manufacturing and limited processing uses. Currently, the code requires one parking space per five hundred square feet of floor area plus one space per employee on a maximum work shift following recent variance request. So there has been a few variance requests for a specific site here in Royal Palm Beach located at one hundred Aldi Way. At the direction of village council through their strategic planning process, staff has reevaluated the standards and is bringing forward the proposed revisions to the code. Village staff surveyed surrounding municipalities and evaluated the parking demands for their manufacturing and limited processing use. And staff has concluded that the proposed parking ratio highlighted in front of you will meet the parking needs for future manufacturing, limited processing uses within the village. Staff request a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding ordinance number ten sixty two.
Thank you, sir. Any comments?
I just thank you to staff for, you know, making it easier for noticing all of the actions that were coming through and making those changes with the times.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That being said, do I have a motion on this item?
Chair, I'm sorry. You may have asked. Just make sure there's no public comment. I know there's nobody here.
Any public comments online?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Do I have a motion on this item?
Okay. One zero six two.
For approval or, all right, so I have a motion for approval by Commissioner Alba. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Deary. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next board meeting tentative for Tuesday, September twenty third. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? All right, motion to adjourn by Commissioner McKellen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor? Motion adjourned. Thank you, guys.